I call this meeting to order. If you would please stand and join me in the flag salute and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's bow our heads. God in heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to be here together this evening, and we thank you for everyone that has joined us. We ask God that as we conduct the business for this city, that we would do so in such a way that serves you and glorifies you and takes care of all your people. We ask God that you would continue to pour your blessings out upon our community, and God, we ask you for some much-needed rain. Please take care of those that are sick and needing of your healing, and we ask again that you continue to pour your love out upon our community. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Someone got a chance to get two of these? We're short one.
No, I don't need one.
Please tell the roll.
Winters.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
All right. Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item one is the minutes from the September 19th, 2022 meeting and the special meeting on March 19th, 2022. It's not there. You know what? We've got a lot to do. The amounts aren't on the agenda that I have. Are they on anybody's table? Can I get a motion to table it? I'll motion to table it up. Okay. We got a motion to table. We got a motion to table by Mr. Winters and second by Mr. Dowling. If you want to approve it, I have it all here. He'll have it. Thank you. So we can vote to not table and then bring it back up? All right. Please call the vote.
Winters.
No.
Dowling.
Yes.
Swallow.
No.
Brooks.
Yes.
Bear.
No.
Bowman.
No.
Stelling.
No.
All right. The items to approve are the minutes of the regular meeting from September 19th, 2022, the minutes of the special meeting held March 19th, 2022, approval of claims in the amount of $138,763.25 and payroll expenses of $176,257.79, and approval of the ASAP Energy Invoice number 4728376 in the amount of $28,862.19.
I was helping to pull the special meetings minutes for 3/19/2022.
That's the budget meeting that we had.
Yeah, there are some issues with the minutes that I would like to address.
Okay. I'll motion to approve the items with the exclusion of the minutes of the special meeting held March 19th, 2022.
I second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda items one, three, and four. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Dowling.
No.
Brooks.
No.
Item, so the item pulling out, the minutes of the special meeting held March 19th, 2022, that was the budget retreat.
That's the budget retreat. Section 312, minutes of the prior meeting indicate that we must clearly show those members present and not present.
Minutes?
No.
All right. Motion to table, somebody?
I'll motion to table.
I'll second.
Have a motion to table the approval of the special meeting, the minutes of the special meeting held March 19th, 2022. Motion is made by Mr. Brooks, second by Mr. Dowling. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Brooks.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
All right. Next item, reports from staff. Because of the length of our agenda, I'm gonna, unless there's something that council member or staff would like to share, I'm gonna ask that we not have all the reports. Is there anything, anybody?
I do have something to share.
Please.
As we all know, Mayor Parker was, got the award of Mayor of the Year, and we are going to celebrate on Thursday. We're going to go ahead and feed our staff from 11 till 12:30, and then 1 to 2, we will have cake and punch for the public. So, and it will be right here at City Hall, so make sure you all come out and enjoy all that with us. On Thursday, the 20th, I believe. Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Then we will move to item number eight, discussion and action to appoint Dr. Garrett Lahr to fulfill the unexpired term of Connor Martin for Ward 1, Seat 2, council member. This is a term that's going to expire in April of 2023. I did receive three recommendations, and each one of them had qualities that would have been, you know, good for our city council. I ultimately brought Dr. Lahr for recommendation because of his business knowledge and experience, his skills as an educator, and his other experiences and interest in the community. And I think that he will ensure that we will have some continued diversity of thought on our city council. I don't know Dr. Lahr, but in speaking with people that do, I believe he will be an articulate voice on matters of finance, policy, and long-range strategy, and so for those reasons, I'm recommending Dr. Lahr for the appointment of the city council.
A motion to appoint Dr. Garrett Lahr to fulfill the unexpired term of Connor Martin for Ward 1, Seat 2, council member.
Do you have the ability to make requests of Dr. Lahr? Just ask some generalized questions, what he thought of the council, what drew him to accepting this and kind of, you know what I mean? What type of pitch did he have to give you to get you on?
I've got a motion and a second. I got a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Beer to appoint Dr. Lahr to fulfill the unexpired term of Connor Martin for Ward 1, Seat 2, council member. Is there any council discussion?
Well, I'm just curious. We had a candidate that actually put the time in and ran. It was in that district or the ward, and I'm just wondering why we chose one candidate over another when we had, you know, justice.
I spoke with all the candidates, or all the people that were recommended. I have no problem with any of the candidates or any of the recommendations. I can only tell you that I chose Dr. Lahr because I felt like he represented a demographic that was not represented on our council.
What does that compare?
Not the same as the other two. It was Justin Scribner and Bryce Benson. Bryce has served on city council before. I didn't feel like having him back on was appropriate, and after I spoke with Mr. Scribner, I felt like he shared a lot of the same ideas as some of our existing council members presently share. So if we have diversity, I feel like when we have diversity and we talk about issues that come up from each of our different perspectives, we come to more well-grounded solutions, and that is my rationale for recommending Dr. Lahr.
I agree, but what was his opinions that differed from everybody else here, not why he was not the same as everybody else?
I mean, I don't know what you guys want to hear. I've told you what I have to say.
Okay.
I don't know what you want to hear.
I didn't know if he had any particular viewpoints on the tax discussions. Understood well municipal law. I know that we've talked about different items that have come up on how to raise money for different items. I didn't know if he had a good view on different business codes that we've addressed. I kind of figured you had a fairly thorough conversation that you could pull some bullet points from, but if I'm assuming too much, I am.
I don't know what, if you have a specific question, feel free, because I feel like I've answered your question. This is a council item.
Okay. Can I open up the floor a little? What drew you to accepting this position other than being reached out in the office?
Taylor, Mr. Dowling, we have a lot of stuff to accomplish tonight. Can we move on? Is anybody ready to vote?
Call the vote? I mean, I'd just like to make an informed decision.
How long have you known that Dr. Lahr was the recommendation?
I think maybe 70 hours?
Then you need to read your email.
Well, I mean, I understand, but I think also that, I know the public is gonna come out with a lot of questions and ask why we did what we did, and, you know, they're gonna bring up the transparency issue that they do bring up fairly often, at least to me. And that's why I think it just, I mean, I know we gotta link the agenda, I understand that, but this is where they're gonna get their news as to why we did what we did, and I mean, because they're not, a lot of times they're not, they don't have the access to all of our emails and our discussions that are going on.
Mr. Scribner, his father is the city marshal. His brother works for the city of Alva. An appointment in that manner, I do not feel would have been appropriate. I think Dr. Lahr does not have, he does not have previous city council experience, and I do not feel, and he does not have anybody that he's related to that currently serves in any capacity for the city of Alva.
I mean, if that's your rationale, it's fine, but that seems more reasons not to pick the other people than to pick Lahr, which I've known Lahr my entire life coming to school. He's a good guy. I just was hoping there'd be a little bit more, but that's fine.
He is an accomplished professional in our community. He's risen to the top of his profession at a young age.
Is this a six-month appointment? Is that what we're talking about?
It is up for election again in April. He just, I mean.
Just a lot of advantages to our incumbent.
Well, then let's vote. Will you please call the vote?
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Dowling.
I'm staying.
Swallow.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
All right. Dr. Lahr, congratulations. Now, if you will come forward, Mr. Cunningham will swear you in.
You can come on up here. You raise your hand. Do you, Garrett Lahr, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and that you will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to your office other than the compensation allowed by law? And do you further swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge your duties as councilperson to the best of your ability?
I do.
Do you need signatures afterwards?
We'll get signatures afterwards. You may join us. Thank you, Garrett. Looks like I skipped over item seven, remarks never read by citizens. I apologize. Are there any citizens that would like to make remarks? I will say, because we do have a public hearing on this agenda, regarding the property that's being declared dilapidated, if you'll hold those until then. Are there any other comments that would want to be made by the public? All right. Thank you. Item 10 is in discussion and action to appoint Sadie Beer to the Alva Tourism Tax Commission to fulfill the unexpired term of Connor Martin.
A motion to appoint Sadie Beer to the Alva Tourism Tax Commission to fulfill the unexpired term of Connor Martin.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling to appoint Sadie Beer to the Alva Tourism Tax Commission to fulfill the unexpired term of Connor Martin.
Winters.
Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Dowling.
No.
Lar.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Bowman.
Yes.
All right. Item 10 is City of Alva Employee Recognition Presentations. The city has in place a process for recognizing employees that go above and beyond, and more so than their regular call to service, and I have a handful that I would like to recognize this evening. Some of these are well overdue, and some of them are for more recent contributions to the city. So if I can get Heather Bonham, Drake Lewis, Jordan Ungles, Tristan Kaat, Robert Burney, Brian Barnett, Jacobi Merrill, and Ricky Woodward, or Woodard, to please come up and join us, or stand up where you're at, either one. These, of course, I'll start with Heather. She's on the agenda first, but Heather, since Angelica left, Heather has taken on many additional roles with the city and has done an outstanding job in doing so. She's put in many, many, many late nights, and she's gone out of her way to make sure that other folks are taken care of as well. I know that on more than one occasion, she brought food and drinks out to you guys while you were working on water lines. So I want to recognize Heather for that. Drake, Jordan, Tristan, these guys have, these are our water department, and they have, it's been discussed at great length how many water line breaks we've had in the city this summer, and they have worked through the night, they have not complained, they have, you know, taken the call on a Friday night when these things happen and have put off their own personal activities in order to make sure that the folks in Alva continue to have water, and so I really appreciate that. Certainly not something that everybody would do, and so thank you, guys. And then Robert Burney, Brian Barnett, Jacobi Merrill, and Ricky Woodard, they are the ones who have been pointed out to me as they've been primarily, whenever it has come to it, those have been the guys that have primarily manned the flatbed pickup when it comes time to pick up trash. And, you know, picking up the garbage is a less than glorious job on most days, and then when you have to do it without the proper equipment, it's even, it presents greater challenges. So these ladies, this lady and these gentlemen are the ones that I would like to recognize this evening. Some of them have been overdue for sure, and like I said, some of them are more recent. With this, I don't know that we printed out any certificates, but the main thing you want is the, we'll be getting you two tickets to the Ralto for a movie night with you and a guest, for you and a guest, and each of you will get eight hours of special vacation. So now I want to get everybody together so Mariana can get a picture, so. Huh? Oh, and dinner. Dinner for two, yeah. Dinner for two, at any restaurant here in Alva. Thank God. All right. Okay. One, two, three.
And let's see, one more to make sure. One, two, three.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Item 12 is a public hearing regarding 827 Maple Street Declaration of Dilapidated Property Structure and Constituting a Detriment or Hazard, Therefore a Nuisance as Defined by City Ordinance Requiring Abatement. This is the portion where, Mr. Parsons, if you'd like to speak, the floor is yours, and anybody else that has come to speak about this property.
Okay. I don't know if you all have seen it, but I've brought pictures, just so you can, showing not only is it a fire hazard, but there's holes in the roof. And our main concern is the animals that come from that property, skunks, raccoons, mice, and of course bugs. Most of the summer, it's, the grass is about up to my waist. It does look that those were taken today. It is mowed, which is a rare occurrence, I will say. And then this is the picture here. This is taken a little while ago, several months, but that was deer in city limits that, I'd say that that property was seen numerous times. So it's not a, you know, the deer aren't terrible. They're nice to see, but not really in town. It's other animals that we don't have pictures of, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. But it's a definitely a public safety issue in the location it's in, and like I said, a fire issue. There's holes in the roofs, there are animals that are living in the house, and it is overgrown, most of the deer, so. And whenever it is mowed, the gentleman who mows it, and I've made several complaints on, he likes to dump, I think it's intentionally, dump all of the grass in the road, which is, provides another hazard there, so.
Don't we have a thing for the grass in the road?
Yeah.
Well, I've called the police on them several times, and that can't, I mean, they
have better stuff to do than give tickets for grass in the road, but yeah, that's what I'll, so, thank you.
Hearing work for the public hearing portion, and just as a reminder, council, we have discussion and action as the next item on this agenda. Any more feedback from the public before we move on? All right. The next item is, thank you, Joe. Next item is discussion and action on declaration of dilapidation for 827 Maple Street and to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance. Adam Grimsley is our code enforcement officer. Adam, would you care to update the council on what has happened leading up to this point that it's on the council agenda?
So up to this point, I have mailed a letter. The person lives in Amarillo, Texas, so it's taking a little bit of time with that, but trying to figure out who all is involved with this property. It's a, it's a family state type deal. There's numerous people involved with it, but I would definitely like to see this getting taken care of as soon as we can before it does become a bigger issue. There is a cellar or a basement that is kind of uncovered at the moment right now. After this, I would like to go board that up, get that taken care of too, just in case. But other than that, I did get a signed certified letter received back to me, so they did receive a letter, and they know about the circumstances of it, so. As of right now, that's where we stand, so.
Published in a paper two times.
Been ran in the paper twice, yes. I think it was last week, and I think probably Sunday this past weekend, so.
How long ago was that letter sent out?
Oh, about September 13th. It should be on the.
Date of receipt, September 14th.
14th, yeah.
Has there been a receipt from the family or attorney that they have this information?
I, all I have is a signed copy from the certified mail that they received it, the letter, and that's all I've received. I haven't gotten any notification from them. My letter does state that I do require you to call me whenever you have a plan, if you want to get rid of it, you want to move forward, try to remodel it, whatevers. I haven't received any phone calls, so there's no contact with them.
That's the Gilpin one?
Mm-hmm. And there's another one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the only address I could find off of the treasurer, and that's what I looked for, so.
To my knowledge, this is kind of the first time, and that's why I've said on the council, it's off the biggest process. So we vote to do it. Will you kind of walk me through the steps on there? How does that, does the family receive any compensation for the property, or how does that work?
So right now, we declare it dilapidated. We'll go through a bid process to try to get it demolished, is my plan, and then once we do that, then a lien will be established on the property, and that will be mailed back to this individual in Amarillo, Texas, and they will have to pay that lien off. If not, they got 60 days to pay it. If not, then the lien goes straight to the tax roll at the county treasurer's office.
Is there a legal time that we're supposed to let the in air out before we demolish it?
Not that I order it.
Do they have to pay for the demo on it? Or is that a city expense?
The city will pay for it right off, and then we send that lien directly.
Okay, that's part of the lien.
Yep.
Do you know of any limit from once that letter's been sent out, that asks that they have time to respond?
Oh, from the time the letter's sent out?
They had to have 10 days notice of today's hearing, which they would have had by his letter.
I actually gave them 30.
Okay.
So.
And so this is the hearing where the council can declare it dilapidated.
So all of the requirements have been met, and that then the recommendation is for a declaration of dilapidation, correct?
I'd make a motion to declare dilapidated 827 Maple Street and to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance.
A second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer to declare dilapidation for 827 Maple Street and take appropriate action to abate the nuisance. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, is it both buildings?
Yes.
Both structures on there.
This is probably two. Is there an estimated cost for us? How much are we going to front to have it dilapidated so they have to come back?
That'll be through the bid process. I'm not sure on that.
We do budget, I don't have it in front of me, but we do budget money for that each year.
It's been $25,000.
15?
15.
15,000. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Item 14 is discussion and action to approve the master equipment lease purchase agreement with Community First National Bank for the SCBA's cylinders, RIT pack, and related equipment for the Alva Fire Department with $18,000 down payment and an annual payment amount of $38,724.04, and authorize the execution of all necessary documents. This equipment is needed for the health and safety of our fire department, both our volunteer and full-time firefighters. The equipment that we presently have is end of life, and so this is necessary in order to protect the safety of our firefighters. The lease purchase agreement allows us to get the equipment for the, for the fire department, but we can terminate that agreement after this initial year, which is what we're approving today, and return the equipment or renew the lease at the end of term, or the other option is to purchase the equipment outright at the end of either, any of these terms as well. The, at the end of five years, if we have not purchased the equipment yet, the equipment is ours. And that essentially is the item, and it is, there is room within the budget to do this, within the fire department budget to do this without making any budget amendments, and therefore both Chief Miller and myself recommend that the council approve this lease purchase agreement.
Chief, what's the life expectancy on this equipment?
15 years.
I make a motion to approve the master equipment lease purchase.
and therefore, both Chief Miller and myself recommend that the council approve this lease purchase agreement.
Chief, what's the life expectancy on this equipment?
Fifteen years.
I make a motion to approve the master equipment lease purchase agreement with Community First National Bank for the scuba's cylinders, RIT pack, and related equipment for the Alba Fighter Department with an $18,000 down payment and annual payment amount of $38,724.04.
Second.
Are you going to authorize the execution of the documents too?
Yes.
All right. Take a breath.
I did.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve the master equipment lease purchase agreement with Community First National Bank for the equipment listed for the Alba Fire Department with $18,000 down and an annual payment in the amount of $38,724.04, and authorize the execution of all necessary documents. Is there any further discussion?
I believe in discussing with Chief Miller that this, these items were going up quite a bit in cost. Have we not acted?
That is correct. And I think this is our, tomorrow actually is our last day to do something without seeing an increase in price, yeah.
And, and we got special pricing for it also. So we say $22,000 on doing that now, and could have seen an influx of about $40,000 if we wait.
Drew has reviewed the purchase, or the lease agreement, and lease purchase agreement, and it's all in order. There is an attestation for the attorney to do, and then, other than that, just signing the agreement and going. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item 15 is discussion and action to approve Resolution 2022-027 authorizing application for financial assistance from REEP for water line, water line replacement. So, as you'll recall, whenever Dr. Wydeck is preparing grant applications, there needs to be an okay from council, not all of them, but with many of them, there needs to be an okay from city council that she go ahead and pursue that. This grant application is to replace $75,000 worth of four-inch lines, putting them to six-inch lines, which we requirement to have fire hydrants and also take our oldest lines out of our system at whatever rate that we can. This grant with REEP has a maximum amount of $75,000, and that's what we're applying for, and we are pledging a $13,000 match, and that is going to be in kind with our labor from the water department. And so, the projects that, that this could serve, but it may not serve, it's, this $75,000 won't meet either one of these fully, but this could be Valley View Street, which, that's the entire street, Valley View, northwest corner of town. That line is in very poor condition, and the water is in very, very poor quality. And if you talk to anybody that lives out there, they'll tell you. And then the other option with this is for Locust Street from College to 12th and College from Church to Oklahoma Boulevard, and that section of line for that area is what's holding up, street repairs in that neighborhood.
I would motion to approve Resolution 2022-027 authorizing application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan Fund for Water Line Replacement.
A second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer, to approve Resolution 2022-027 authorizing application for financial assistance from REEP for water line replacement. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 16, discussion and action to approve the sale to Wheeler Brothers Grain, a part of Block Five, original of the town of Alva, extending from Fourth Street to Fifth Street, adjacent to the northern boundary of 420 Santa Fe Street, for fair market value of $3,000. Authorize the mayor to sign any necessary documents. This, this is the first time that I've dealt with the sale of property by the city, but state statutes allow for municipalities to sell property that does not serve a purpose for the city, as long as it has, I think that one of the requirements that has to be met is that it has an economic development purpose to it. And Wheeler Brothers is looking to expand their operation. The property that's, that's under consideration here was originally in the city of Alva's, and then the railroad came in and they, they took it over, and then the way the agreement was written with the railroad, that when the railroad no longer needed it, it went back to being the city of Alva's. So it's never property that we've used. And so Wheeler Brothers has been maintaining it for, I don't know, the whole time since they, or since the railroad turned it back over, and then we had a fair market value determined by local realtor Charles Murrow, it to be $3,000. Our obligation is to get fair market value for it, and the Wheeler Brothers are agreeable to that amount, and so that, the recommendation is to approve the sale.
I'd make a motion to approve the sale as stated in the agenda.
I second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer, to approve the sale to Wheeler Brothers of the property described in the agenda for $3,000. Authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents. Is there any further discussion?
How can we, why don't we just put it up for bid and give the pub, all the public a chance to have a chance? I mean, I'd like to see Wheeler Brothers expand their operation, but being public property, I think that the general public ought to have the opportunity to.
I mean, I can't argue against that. I know that the statutes are satisfied doing what we're doing. No other businesses or entities have expressed interest in it, and I would also argue that if we don't sell it to Wheeler Brothers, it could limit them. And so I, that's just my recommendation. You guys can, can vote on it as you see fit. It's legal.
I remember in discussion, we had talked about determining the deed of ownership when we granted the city, I think that was back when you, was that determined, that we have an accurate deed of property?
It's the city of Alva's.
How many square feet is it? Or is it?
There's a land description for it. It's .87 acres, more or less. It's a little less than an acre. And you can see on the picture, it is right up behind Wheeler Brothers, the way that, it cuts that block.
There's two sections of track still laying on the property, I think.
Wheeler Brothers actually owns a half of that parcel of the water.
All right. I got a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer. No further discussion. I'll, please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Dowling?
Upstate.
Brooks?
Upstate.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item is discussion and action with respect to Resolution Number 2022-29 of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, City approving action to take, approving action taken by the Alba Utility Authority, the authority, Resolution 2022-28 authorizing issuance, sale, and delivery of its drinking water SRF promissory note to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract pertaining to the water, sanitary sewer, and solid waste disposal systems, and containing other provisions related thereto. We have with us this evening Alan Brooks and Chris Gander, who are our bond counsel and financial advisor with regard to the, this agenda item. The city is, as you guys are aware, we have a need to replace our water meters due to about a third of our system is presently failing, and therefore causing increased burden on staff, and also jeopardizing our ability to accurately bill for the water that is provided, which is going to be a violation of what we have to do for OWRB and DDQ. So we, we have an obligation to, to make sure that our water meter system is functioning properly. The amount, well, I'll start with, there's an agenda item in the city council meeting, and there's also an agenda item in the utility authority meeting. The amount that we're looking at for the total project is 1.7 million, and with the potential of $800,000 to possibly a million dollars in principal forgiveness. The note, if, if we, if we get the resolutions that we have to approve, if we pass those, they set the determination that the project will not exceed $1.7 million, that the interest rate will not exceed 4.25%, and that there's an understanding that if we don't get the principal forgiveness portion of it, all of, everything that we do deny is going to have to come back to city council. So if any of those three things aren't met, we will be back here talking about this again. But if those things are met, we would approve these resolutions this evening. Our consultants would, would do their work to get us the, the funding and the, check off all the boxes and make sure that we have completed everything that we're required to complete, and then we would proceed with the going up for bids and completing the project and, and all of that. This will have basically zero impact on this year's debt repayment obligation. Next year, we'll see about a $30,000 increase in, in debt payments, and then the year after that, we'll see about a $140,000 decrease, and then the year after that, it'll, it'll decrease another, I don't have it in front of me, but it'll decrease even more. So we are retiring debt, and by us retiring debt, this is not going to have a, a long-term increase in our debt obligations that we pay on an annual basis. The, let's see, we'll talk about the, there's another agenda item to, to talk about the contract with Myers, that's in the utility authority, and then the other resolution is in the utility authority as well. Mr. Brooks, Mr. Gander, would you like to, how did I do?
Good work. Just by way of background, I think I was actually contacted initially by your engineer, Myers Engineering, said that the city had a meter project that needed to be addressed, and they were aware of a program through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and Department of Environmental Quality where we can get what's called principal forgiveness. It's a fancy word for grant money. So again, this, this contemplates that we, of the million seven, we would receive 800,000 of that as principal forgiveness, and as Mayor said, potentially up to a million in principal forgiveness or write-off of, of principal on the loan. So what we're talking about is a $900,000 repayment obligation, assuming we get 800,000, and even, even more if we get up to the million in principal forgiveness. This program is available on a first come, first served basis, so your engineer has tried to get everything to the Department of Environmental Quality for review. Documents are in, being processed. Ultimately, this comes down to if we met DEQ's requirements while there's still principal forgiveness money left and available. The mayor stated everything accurately relative to debt service on the, one correction if I could, Mayor, we're, we're about 29,000 up in one year. Next year, we're under. Your debt service reduces below what it is today, even in light of the new debt, by about 78,000, and then it drops, jumps up to about 195,000 for the next eight years after that. So again, one year, you're, you're over your current debt service levels by about $30,000, 29,000 after that, you're, you're better off than you are today, assuming, even taking into account the new debt that's being layered on. And again, that is by virtue of the fact that you have some other debt obligations secured by your utility revenues that are maturing and are falling off. Transaction, if it happens, if you decide to vote for it, we move forward, and it basically happened as soon as the Department of Environmental Quality reviewed and determined that there was principal forgiveness money available. Mr. Gander's firm is preparing, would be preparing a financial application to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. That's, that's all contingent upon what you'll decide to do this evening.
The two resolutions that we have to approve will allow staff to take all the appropriate, staff and myself to take all the appropriate actions to cause this to go through to completion.
One of the, it's basically approval of the debt and the principal forgiveness transaction, and more specifically, it authorizes, or maybe in addition, it authorizes the financial application to be completed and turned into the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for their review and approval. And that, that's an administrative requirement they have to make sure that the governing body supports the application process.
We do meet all of the qualifications that OWRB and DEQ have to be able to receive this funding, so it's, we don't have to meet any other qualification. We're already there. We just got to hope we're in the right spot in line. Somebody's going to get that money, it might as well be us.
What are the percentages of applicants to people who receive the money?
There's, it's a first come, first served deal. I mean, they'll, they're going to essentially hand the money out until the money's gone. And I mean, there's, there's a, I think about $11 million, okay? A million of it has already been approved, so I mean, there's, there's going to be 10 other people that get the money, and in terms of, I have no basis for knowing how many people are doing the same thing we're doing right here tonight, so.
But there's no guarantee that we're going to get the money?
No, absolutely not. And if you don't get the money, then.
Then we're stuck with the debt.
Pardon me?
Then we're stuck with the debt.
Yeah, no, no, no. If we don't get the 800,000 in principal forgiveness, the deal has to come back to you all, or if you wanted to pursue it without the principal forgiveness, that would be a separate transaction, we'd come back and meet with you. This assumes you get the 800,000 or more.
Has there been anything said on the company that sold us the inferior product to store, not just us, but several other communities? Do they have some skin in this also?
That's not the agenda item, so we're going to have to have that on another agenda.
Just out of curiosity, what calculated our debt revenue? Did you use the 2021 audit or the 2020 audit?
I used the 2021 audit. Yes.
The difference between those two with the, including of the HA debt? Because in 2021, our debt was about 11 million, and the 2022, since the HA was separated, is about 6 million.
The utility authority debt.
The utility authority debt is four of the HA. I got it. Go to you. Yeah, pardon that mistake? Yeah, and so I didn't know if those are made in your calculations, but they're booked separately.
Separate.
You agree that the AHA is separate?
All right. And I closed, I almost had that too, I assume.
I'm sorry. That's already been satisfied.
There's, there's, there's three debt obligations that we're taking into account in connection with measuring your payments and that they're going up or down, that are secured by a pledge of your utility system revenues. utility system revenues. There's a 2014 B transaction that pays off in 2025, that creates most of the margin. There's another transaction, a 2017 loan with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, that was for a tower project, and then 2018 bank financing that was done, that was for miscellaneous utility system improvements. But those, to be clear, those are the three obligations that we are taking into account as when we're looking at with debt going up and down, those are debt obligations that I understand are secured by your utility revenues and we measure against.
I guess my fear is, as we talk about the meter issues, we also have a grant of, which is almost $50 million, to fix our existing well infrastructure. It indicates that we have 50 drilled wells with about two...
We don't have a grant for $50 million.
Sorry, no, we do not, but we have proposed to the city to receive, I'm talking about the...
We did, we, that's not going to happen in government?
No, it's not, and that's the issue, is that we have a lot more things to consider than just fixing meters, because we could charge people for the price of the water, but if we do not fix the wells and the number of issues that we have, we're kind of looking at a small thing compared to a $50 million thing down the line.
Which we need the revenue that the meters provide us, and we're to pay for those.
And so we also have...
In addition to all of those time labor hours and everything else that we're paying, that we're having to pay by not going ahead and replacing these meters. This is a project that has to happen with the failure rate that we have. Yeah, there's no way around it. Otherwise, sure, I guess we can provide water for free and not maintain our current infrastructure as you're suggesting.
Well, I'm not suggesting that, actually. I would say that we don't have to buy all the meters at once, we don't have to make the same mistakes we did in the past, because we still owe the debt on the meters currently. That's about $800,000. We could buy part of the meters, replace the meters we have looking forward, and we have an agenda item later called the ARCA funding of about $800,000 that we're going to put into the general fund. Is it possible for you, some of that money, to offset the cost of this project, pushing the large note and debt that we will most likely have to have to do that bigger project later down the line, and kind of do that instead of committing to a debt now? Because when we talk about the utility fund, when I calculate it out, about 45%, 40% almost of the entire budget of the water department is debt paid.
How, and how many we buy is determined by this? That'll be determined by later on, once we make the bid package to, you know, in that time, determine, you know, the company, if we want the company we're talking to, said we, you know, possibly stagger the purchase, but that's to be determined later.
And I'm saying that if we look forward, that seems like a good option, maybe the next year or two, but when we're talking about the long-term development of ALVA for the 10-year, for the 15-year time span, I'm worried that we are putting ourselves in too much of a hole to look forward, because we're digging it too deep.
We discussed the failure rate, and then the increasing failure rate on the existing water meters that we currently have, and then in addition to that, you referenced the ARCA funding, so the discussion that has been centered around the ARCA funding is that those funds would potentially be used to offset the debt to the airport for bringing up our capital improvement funds that we've been putting away to the...
What is the amount of that capital improvement fund?
5%, sales tax collections each month.
Which is what we've been setting aside to pay back.
I just didn't know what that numerical number is.
Well, 5% is roughly $400,000 in September, so 5%, I don't know, somebody do the math.
And that offsets the offhand cash balance of, I think, a million and a half that we currently have?
What?
Currently owed...
The cash trend analyst would indicate that we have...
We've got $3.6 million in cash, $1.6 million in...
I guess unassigned debt, my apologies, would be the indication of this number.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but currently, from what I can see, the money owed out of the general fund is $621,672.29.
Oh, I'm just looking at the last cash trend analyst paper that I had from last year.
So this is based off of this month's numbers, and then currently looking at what is set aside to pay back to the airport. That checking account is, wait, do I have that right?
It's roughly 250.
Yeah, this number, this number is not, not correct on here, I don't believe. I know we have 400, what is it, 400, and that's not the right number either. Currently sitting for ARCA is 433,149, which we expect to roughly double, and then currently sitting in the 522 checking account, 2,502.62, we're still waiting on that payment, which is going to be roughly 300,000.
And this, the 522, can't calculate that into the unassigned cash account?
We can, with the understanding that the funding that is there has already been paid out of wages. We've had that debate over and over and over again, and we've settled that debate. Legally, we paid out out of wages.
I might mention one other point that might be helpful as it relates to your discussion in terms of how you purchase your meters. The funding is in the form of a line of credit, all right? This will be a line of credit for 1.7 million, assuming you get the 800,000 of principal forgiveness, those are the first dollars drawn, grant money basically drawn first, so you wouldn't pay that back or interest, so at any point along the way, you wouldn't want to stop drawing until at least you drew down the principal forgiveness, but you have some flexibility in terms of the timing at which you draw down the balance of money. Once you cross over that principal forgiveness line, that's when those are dollars that you're paying back, so you'll know. And any decisions that you make relative to the meters, number of meters you're going to buy, when you're going to buy them, that would be after you receive bids on the meters, and you can make that decision at that point in time. Again, that's just FYI.
Right now, the meters are paramount and are mechanism to pay off everything, and it's broken to where we're unable to accurately assess the bills plus sending someone out to read meters.
What did it take? Three guys, three days to that, this one?
Four days.
Three guys, four days?
Four guys, and we're going to, we're going to be out there for two weeks.
This last cycle, we had 609 meters, we had to read by hand, 18 pages, that went up almost 60 meters the last month.
I agree, it's a terrible situation, but there was a council just like us debating the same thing, and they went through it, and look at where we're here, we are no better than we are, except we have debt there that we need to pay off in that project, and we're looking at getting in more debt to do the same project, would appear to be the exact same.
So if you want to fix it, let's have a motion, let's get this ball rolling, and if you don't want to fix it...
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-29.
Okay. Have a motion from Mr. Winters, seconded by Mr. Stelling, to approve Resolution Number 2022-29, as stated in Item 17 in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Brooks?
Upstate.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Upstate.
Bear?
Yes.
All right, thank you, and I, at this time, I want to take a recess from the city council meeting and go ahead and address these items in the utility authority meeting that are Heather, when you're ready, please call the roll for the utility authority meeting.
Winters?
Here.
Lar?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Okay. That's my fault. This, now I got it all, it's long. We're going to go to Item 5, Discussion and Action with Respect to Resolution 2022-028, that the ALVA Utility Authority, the borrower, agreed to file application with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, the OWRB, for financial assistance through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program, approving and authorizing a drinking water SRF loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 1.7 million, approving the issuance of a promissory note in the total aggregate principal amount not to exceed 1.7 million, secured by a pledge of revenues and authorizing its execution, approving the, approving and authorizing the execution of a loan agreement for drinking water SRF loan, designating a local trustee, and approving and authorizing the execution of trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of a security agreement, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contracts pertaining to certain water, sanitary sewer, and solid waste management systems, ratifying and confirming a parity agreement, approving various covenants, approving and authorizing establishment of project cost disbursement account, and approving and authorizing payment of fees and expenses and containing other provisions relating thereto. Again, this, if the objective of this council is to move forward with the financing option and pursue the OWRB principal forgiveness, then approval of this item is necessary. If that's not the intent of this council, then disapproving this item will not only disapprove this item, but it'll make the one we just approved null and void.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-028.
The item that I was talking about was the Series 2013 Sales Tax on Utility Revenue Notice, with the original amount of $7,500,000.
We don't, that's paid off. That's not on our...
Oh, so in a year, we paid off $7 million? I'm just reading the line item, I really have no idea.
Line item from what?
2020, the city's audit for the AHA, listing the Series 2013 Sales Tax.
2020.
He's, I think we're talking about the ALVA Hospital Authority, and he's talking about the 2013 note.
We're not responsible for that.
Yeah, so this, that's secured by a dedicated sales tax, can only be used by the hospital.
It just leaves utility revenue in the agenda item, or the audit that I...
It's, so that's not any of the ones we're talking about, but there is a, it's not really the number, but I think that's what a little confusion is. So there has been, and that was an older note that was refinanced in 2010. So it, it's, it falls off 6129, but once again, I mean, originally, you guys passed a sales tax, it was for the hospital, that could only be used for the debt service, and then it...
Debt service, and then in 2012, it was...
Broadened, where they could use it for operations, but that's the debt, and it's the hospitals, it's under public trust.
The city is not responsible for that debt, other than the tax remains in place until the debt is paid.
Correct.
It's, we don't have to budget that number. If the sales tax is insufficient, that's not our problem. I got a motion by Mr. Winters. That's all I heard, though.
Second.
Second, okay. And seconded by Mrs. Bear, to approve Resolution 2022-028, as stated as Number 5 in the Utility Authority Agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Upstate.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Upstate.
Blair?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you, Chris, thank you, Alan. You either stay and participate, or watch, or you can leave me the stuff to sign, and we'll get into you. We will recess the utility authority meeting and return to the city council meeting. Item 18 is Discussion and Action to Approve Resolution 2022-024. We are not ready to approve this. When the agenda was set, the anticipation was that we would have that money in our account, and we don't, and so in order to make sure that we approve an appropriate resolution, we're going to take, I would ask for a motion to table this item.
Motion to table Resolution 2022-024.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mr. Stelling, to table this item. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
All right. Item 19 is Discussion and Action on Resolution 2022-025, to fund holiday events projects as requested by citizens. I don't know how many of the rest of you get phone calls on this matter. I haven't kept track of them, but I know every year, somebody's chewing me out because we don't have Christmas lights on the water tower, and we don't do stuff, I mean, and then there's, you know, also, you know, people that would like to see, you know, fireworks, and it's not necessarily the, it's not that I get chewed out from everybody, but some people chew. Most people just want to see the town dressed up for certain times of year, and the city participating in some of that. What, the resolution that was drafted and sent out, gosh, I probably sent it out two weeks ago to you guys, that would, if approved, that would allow the city to participate in, in the, in these holiday, I got it, I got that one, in these holiday service projects. If we have funds available, and it doesn't, and by participation, it does not, it does not make it to where we're not going to be able to carry out the operations of our municipality, or debt service, or anything like that. If the funds are there, we can do it, if the funds aren't there, we won't do it. None of these amounts are likely, at least not at this time, what people have asked of me, none of these amounts are likely to exceed the spending levels, and so therefore they would require individual council action, but...
They would require to be budgeted.
They would be required to either be budgeted or, or fit within the existing budget. And so that's the resolution. I got a message from John Ryerson, who was unable to attend this evening, but wanted to express support of passing of this resolution. I know that in talking with Jody Bradford of the Chamber, she and her board would be in favor of the passing of this resolution as well. John represents an entity that would be a partner in carrying out some of those holiday activities, as does Jody, so. With this resolution, it'll allow us to, you know, engage the community to work on things like this. We presently budget staff time and some resources for several other holidays throughout the year, and then we have an Easter egg hunt, which takes both staff and dollars. We have a breakfast with Santa that takes both staff and dollars. We have Memorial Day, Veterans Day, things that definitely take staff time, I'm not sure what dollars on those, but, you know, this isn't out of the ordinary for a city to participate in this type, these type of programs and activities.
What's the difference in allowing the, obviously, I was at the Easter egg hunt, what's the difference between that we allow those events now without this resolution, and we would like to expand that? Is it just that we want to only support them monetarily?
Nope.
Okay, and so that's just to keep it above board and on the books for all we've done in the past?
Yep.
And talking to John, he said this, they don't intend it to be like sole, if they come and like present something to us, it's not going to be the sole resource, it's still like the other avenues and stuff, or some of these kind of stuff that, I mean, to raise money for the, like, the fireworks and stuff, it's just, I mean, it's not, and that's the way it should be, that...
So what exactly are we going to be paying for then? I mean, we're not paying for the fireworks, right? We're paying just...
No, I mean, to have to.
We could.
We could, yes.
But not necessarily.
Fireworks and Christmas decorations to have a, you know, scenery downtown.
But.
That's gone in the gonaway.
Presumably, just do that now.
We don't pay for the fireworks now, though.
No, we don't.
Tourism, Tourism Commission has.
Yeah.
But we put on other events that are holiday based without this resolution. It sounds like the Easter egg hunt being the example that comes to mind.
This is more, I believe, just not in, we're in support of that type deal that shows the community to do that, I mean, we're willing to participate.
But before this resolution.
I know, but it's not really public. I mean, this puts us on the record that.
Well, and before Rotary did all the fundraising.
This, this reinforces what we've done, and says it's a continue, we continue to support that.
Yes.
It's important for Alba to have these events and have, if we have a nice setup downtown, people are going to come, just like I travel to King Fisher or Crystal Beach to take pictures of lights. People would travel here if we had something nice down on the square or somewhere. So it's important for Alba to have these things to make it more appealing and appeasing.
But I think it would be privately funded. I mean, I wouldn't ask the general public to have to, you know, somebody that has no interest in it to be funded.
When you're taxing people to distribute money, we're taking from everybody, even the people who can't afford it. The people who say, I can't buy my children Christmas toys because I don't have enough money to do it. We're, we're taking their money and putting on a Christmas show for everybody else, which is great that they can participate in it. I just don't think it should have to come at the cost of their lives.
To the example that you give, if, if we, if we participate in the fireworks funding, then Rotary can buy more toys for Toys for Tots.
They're wanting to focus on that more, and they just.
And that's awesome, but I don't want to take it from the people who can't afford it, and that's what tax dollars does.
This isn't increasing a tax. This isn't asking for them for more money. This is just a commitment.
It's not asking, it's telling them that the money they provide on the sales tax must go.
Because Rotary doesn't ask all these people for money as well, and as long as we're getting.
It's taking away their right.
A request from tourism. So it's, it's no different. They're not, they want to talk to these people for Toys for Tots, not for the Fourth of July, or the Christmas, you know. So it is a city obligation for us to have nice things for Fourth of July, and Christmas, and Easter.
And that's what.
We need to support that. We're not increasing taxes. I mean, I'm just like everybody else. I don't want to pay more, but I want to see nice things, and I will do what I have to do to do it.
I agree, but it's not the same as the tourism tax. The people voted at that they would like this portion of money collected to go to them. And I completely support that. And I give very, I give to these events, and I plan to give to the Fourth of July fireworks. My issue is that we're taking from everyone, even if we don't like that.
Well, I mean, I've had several people come to me and ask why the city doesn't do these things. It's not Rotary or.
I've had more people come to me and ask about it than I've had to complain about this possibility.
Well, like, American Legion, or Rotary, or any of these clubs, these memberships, it's not their duty to be putting on these city events. And they are, and they have been, and memberships go down. People don't have time to do it, and that's their funding for these events. And we will budget it, and yes, it may take away from, some are slightly, you know, but it's important. It has to happen.
I'm part of the resolution states that it doesn't detract or take away from the operations.
Yeah, we're not.
These events contribute to the betterment of the local economy.
Yep.
At the end of the day, if somebody comes here for the Fourth of July, and they see something great, they might come back for a weekend and, and spend more money. And if somebody comes to town, you know, during the holiday season, and they just really love our Christmas light display, they might come back and spend some more money.
Well, and there were examples of people who, when I, when I spoke with Mr. Ryerson, who, he was able to, to name people who have come from other places and ended up staying in town and eating at our restaurants. And so it, it is, it does have some economic development aspects to it. I motion to approve Resolution 2022 dash zero two five.
I think you guys are looking past the people you're taking the money from.
We're not taking money from anywhere, though.
A motion from Mr. Winters, and a second from Mrs. Beer.
It's not even.
To approve Resolution 2022 dash zero two five to fund holiday events projects as requested by citizens. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Kelly, I'm sorry, but who's second in it?
I do.
Okay. Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Swallow?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item is, item number 20, Discussion in Action to Authorize the Mayor to Pursue and Execute a Mineral Lease for the, for the cemetery property in Alphatah County with Forward Land. The terms being $150 per mineral acre, three-year term, 3/16th royalty. We don't presently have a contract, but we did receive a lease request from Forward Land. Legal counsel has reviewed our previous contract from back in 2008, and with the exception of adding an, an addendum to that, if Forward Land came back with the same terms as they did previously in 2008, it would be consistent with what he usually advises his clients on, on mineral leases. I can't speak knowledge of the on that, but maybe Drew can.
The only thing I'd like to see included with it is, if it's, if it's going off that saying it's the same as the last one, it's a term of five years, there is a shut-in clause where they have to pay a small amount to continue to hold the lease. I'd like, I normally put in, when I do lease for people, a part that says, they can only shut in for two years or so after the initial term of the lease. They can't continue to kind of hold you hostage on that lease by paying that not-for-all amount. So, just an addendum included with that. Otherwise, it's, it's a pretty standard oil and gas lease.
Whatever lease is, is ultimately presented by them, we would bring it back for approval. This just says, hey, we want on your list, and you can send us a, a lease for our consideration. Now, what you were discussing there was like, say, there would be production sometime, and then that work, that kind of, well, kind of goes out where they can't keep holding.
Yeah, most of these leases, they get to continue holding it if they are producing. The way this, the way this lease looks like is if they can continue to just pay that shut-in clause and not produce on it, but still hold the lease. So just, just making sure that after the five-year terms, they've only got so much time before they've got to start producing or give us, give it back, essentially. Has this item been for the cemetery board?
Nope.
It's brought to my attention that the, the property in question, that all revenue derived from that property must go to the benefit of the perpetual care.
Nope.
All right. I'm just making sure we're following that chain.
The timing of the request, they, they wanted their response by today. I called them and said, we can't have their response by today. And so I said, if you'll wait till my council meets on Monday night, I'll call you Tuesday morning and, and let you know what you guys decide. And they, they said they would do that. And this, all this does is return, is respond to their letter of request that we are interested in pursuing a lease with them. I don't believe there's much activity really going around, so it's kind of surprising that, that this is happening. I mean, it's.
I thought they were headed out this way.
My recommendation would be to approve it, and that way, if, if it does produce something, I mean, that's more money for the cemetery.
Do, do, do we need to add to the motion to address the item that you're referencing?
I don't know that we do, because we're not approving this lease. We're just approving to kind of negotiate with.
Okay.
So I don't know.
So you can, you can work on that then.
So they'll, they'll send us a lease. I can add and then, and then have stuff added to it.
And that's normal.
There will be a lease coming back from our council. Okay. So I would motion to authorize the mayor to pursue and execute a mineral lease for the cemetery property in Alphatah County with Forward Land.
I second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer, to authorize the mayor to pursue and execute a mineral lease for the cemetery property in Alphatah County with Forward Land, as stated. Item 20 in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Upstaying.
Item 21, actually, I want to recess before we go into executive session, wrap up all the other business on the other two agendas, and then come back. So, we will return to the Utility Authority Meeting. Item three is Discussion in Action on Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration, action on the following items: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 19th, 2022, approval of claims in the amount of $137,129, and payroll expenses of $62,400 and .66.
Motion for Consent Agenda?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling, a second by Mr. Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Brooks?
Yes.
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right. Item six is Discussion in Action to Approve Contract with Myers Engineering for Water Meter System Updates in an Amount Not to Exceed $39,500. Myers has done the engineering for, the pre-engineering for the project with the water meters. This contract, which is in the packet, that was in the PDF packet online, is for them to be the engineer on record for the project. It is consistent with their previous contracts on, on similar projects, and it's my recommendation that we approve the contract.
I'll motion to approve the contract with Myers Engineering for Water Meter System Updates in an Amount Not to Exceed $39,500.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mr. Stelling, to approve contract with Myers Engineering for Water Meter System Updates in an Amount Not to Exceed $39,500. I will say that, since the contract drew, no issues there. And like I said, it's consistent with what we've approved in the past for similar projects. There's no further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. Item number seven is Discussion in Action to Approve the Bulk Water Contract with Rural Water District Number One for Water Service and Transferring Ownership and Transmission Line. So, the Rural Water Department Number One, or District Number One, in 2017, when we signed agreements with the other rural water districts, they chose not to sign an agreement with the city about it. So, at that time, the city did not choose to get out of the water business with them, and they continued to service them with, with water to their district. And since that time, though, there have been dozens of thousands of dollars spent on, on that particular infrastructure, and, and we're still operating off of an equated, what was the old one, 1970?
68. 67.
67 contract. And so, we need to get them into the same agreement as the other rural water districts are using. And with this, we're recommending that the point of delivery be moved inside the city limits, which would be at the north end of Third Street. Yes, north of the old artery. And so that's what this agreement is. If, if they don't have an agreement in place, they'll have to find some other option for water. I do know that their financial position is, is sound. They, they have, you know.
It's Second Street, by the way.
Is it second?
Yeah.
North Second.
I couldn't remember if it was Second or.
I thought it was north of the old artery.
Yeah, it's North Second. It just offsets.
Yeah, okay. You get the idea. It's in, it's, it's the same eight-inch transmission line, just moving the meter inside the city limits. And then that'll, that'll give them a couple more customers that are presently ours.
Forward.
But then they'll, they'll get the line that we just put in, and they, they paid for half that with us. But they'll get that line, and they'll get those customers, and we'll build them for the water. We'll still build in for all the water that's, that's used on those customers.
Are they caught up on their obligation that they're for all the line?
Yes. Okay. I make a motion to approve the Bulk Water Contract with Rural Water District Number One for Water Services and Transferring Ownership at Transmission Line.
Second. And to clarify, is this an agreed-upon contract?
No.
Or proposed contract for them to agree to?
They either agree to it, or they, they don't. 30 days to, to get their approval.
Okay. This covers the transmission line that crosses the river, right?
Yes.
What are the repercussions for not approving it after 30 days? I assume that we've had amenable talks up till now?
No.
Oh.
They don't want to talk.
They don't want to talk.
Okay. So, Mike, what's the, what's the big guy after 30 days if they don't approve it?
Pull the meter.
All right. And does that prevent those customers from receiving the water?
Yes. We don't. It's their doing it because they don't approve the contract.
Their, their customers.
If, if their contract were any different than anybody else's, I could see where they might want to negotiate something, but everybody else is under the same contract.
And they've operated on this contract now for, what is that? I mean, I think it's almost five years since we negotiated these, these contracts in the past.
I was, the one I drafted was based off one out of 2017, so.
Yeah, because these were renegotiated with the other water districts at the same time that we initially proposed a water rate increase, a new weight rate structure, which was, yeah, 2016, 2017 timeframe. And we gave them a deference because they were going to be doing.
They were, at that time, they had asked that we defer the contract until they moved, they were going to replace the transmission line and move the meter into town at that time. And they had, five years later, not done that. We were agreeable to that. They haven't done it, though, so we're, you know, most of that transmission line has been replaced at this point, and so we're ready to do that.
I guess, will we have a council meeting before we cut that water off to all those people?
We don't have to.
I mean, I would 100% agree with it if we could. I just don't want to agree to this, and we get in a who's-taller match, you know what I mean? And then we got to prevent people from having water.
I was there.
Bring them back to the table.
I was there.
Drake's been to their meetings.
And, and they're not agreeable to our contracts and our terms, so I mean, I guess at the end of the day, the.
If they bring back a, a negotiation.
But they, it sounds like they didn't respond to us in any sort of constructive manner.
Here's my deal. It is not us shutting off water to those customers. It is 100% on them. They are refusing to even come to the table for negotiations. Their customers can get mad at them for shutting their water off.
It's fair contract. I mean, the other ones have accepted it, abided by several years. I mean, it's not like we're expending.
It's unfair to those other water districts to allow them to continue to operate on the contract we didn't allow them to operate on. So.
And actually, you have customers in the room that are on that, right? One right here, one right there.
All right. I've got a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Stelling. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Upstaying.
Lar?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Item eight is New Business. We don't have anything that meets the requirements for new business. And so, number nine is to adjourn Utility Authority Meeting. Hard to believe we're on 30% done. Okay. Next item is to open the meeting, call the order of the meeting of the Alfa Economic Development Authority. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lar?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items: item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting in September 19th, 2022, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of $13,268.23 and payroll expenses of $12,181.81. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
All second. Have a motion by Mr. Stelling, a second by Mr. Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Me?
Swallow.
Oh, Swallow, sorry. I might guess I'm enough. Yes.
All right. Item, um, five is new business, and again, we don't have anything that meets the definition of new business. Um, item six then is discussion and action to approve, this is not, uh, this is a technical error, it's not approximately, it is $34,978 for bleacher repairs by Heartland Seating, Inc., at the Alba Recreation Complex. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Board, uh, heard this, uh, item on their agenda last Wednesday. Um, essentially, the, uh, the bleachers, um, are original to the building, and some of the parts are wearing out. So, that includes motors, that includes wheels, that includes bearings, that includes a number of items with the bleachers. Uh, the other item, uh, issue with the bleachers is that when they're fully extended, they extend out, uh, too close to the playing, um, court, and so it's creating a safety issue. So this proposal, uh, for $34,978 is going to repair all of the damaged pieces of, of equipment that are on the bleachers, and it is going to, um, remove one section of the, the bleachers, allowing them to, uh, not extend as far out towards the courts. Um, by doing that, it should also take some wear and tear off of the, uh, the wheels and the motors, because it, it would make it to where the, the bleachers no longer have to extend out over the, the metal lip that goes from the outside of the playing surface to the playing surface. So, um, they approved the item, um, they do have the, the funding, um, available within either their, um, fund balance from previous years, um, or, um, they do have the option, they have, um, some approved capital expenditures that, uh, they can, uh, reallocate towards this if they so choose. Gail, did I hit the, that all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, the, like I said, uh, it's the Parks and Recreation Commission recommendation to approve this.
I'd motion to approve. declare for $1,978 for bleacher repairs by Heartland Seating, Incorporated, for the Alba Recreation Complex.
Second.
I was just going to ask, when, uh, did they have a time of when they want to make this work?
Uh, they.
We decided that we would pursue it before the end of the year.
Just the end of the year, like, hopefully not in the month or two. I got a few events that I.
They thought to do it when there's nothing going on.
Okay, that's awesome. I had a few events that I got to utilize this.
They're looking at Christmas break.
Okay, goodbye. Then I'll talk to them about this, but that sounds perfect.
Yeah, they look at, they're looking at Christmas break. All right. Please call the vote.
Sorry, I missed the second again.
Swallow.
Yeah.
We're going to have to take Gail out to eat.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Item seven is discussion and action to approve the conceptual plan for the Alba Aquatic Center Bath House, Alba Aquatic Center Bath House Floor Plan, and the Hatfield Park Aquatic Center from Kimley Horn Architects, as recommended by the Citizen of Alba Citizen Pool Advisor, City of Alba Citizen Pool Advisory Committee, and the Alba Parks and Recreation Board. Um, you'll see in the packet, um, there's, um, the drawings, and, um, I'm pretty sure Marion had the, uh, pool drawing in the, in the paper, um, this week. Um, when you, just kind of to give you a, a brief explanation of what we've got, uh, for the bath house, there is not going to be much in the way of changes. This has been, um, put on the, it's going to be put on the National Historic Register, or National Registry of Historic Places, and so it's, uh, with the, any funding that we receive from the federal government is going to require that we, um, not diminish the original integrity of, of the, of, of the, the building and, and the property, with the exception where there needs to be upgrades in order to ensure, uh, Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, um, or other safety issues. Um, the, so the building is not going to really change. Um, they're going to look at sprucing it up with some landscaping, because that's about really all they can do. It's going to have to go back to the original white paint. Um, they're going to, uh, plan on re-glazing all of the old windows. Um, and, uh, you know, this is, I, I joked with them, it's an old building, um, and it was, was built, um, very cost-effectively back in that day, and so there's, there's not a lot of bells and whistles to it. It's, it's going to be a plain old building, um, even when they're done. Um, on the inside, uh, they are going to, well, on the outside, they are going to relocate the entrance to the pool to the east side, um, where the covered area is, the open covered area, um, that is attached to the building. They're going to set up out there, and that'll be the entrance to the pool. Um, inside, uh, because they have to, they have to tear down the inside walls, um, uh, where the original office was in order to be, to have the, the appropriate width of, of hallways for ADA accessibility, they're going to move the office, um, to the south side of, of that center area. And, and so the, the, the original front door will only be for the office, and then there'll be another door for the office inside the building. Um, and, and then the, the, the locker rooms, bathrooms, uh, will be remodeled for, uh, compliance. And then the other area that will be, um, adjusted is that, uh, over time, we have put walls up inside, uh, that room on the northwest corner of the pool. Um, those walls will come down, and that will be a multipurpose room that they'll be able to rent out for birthday parties, other, you know.
Classes.
Classes, whatever. It, it, it's multipurpose, so. Um, so that is the, the bath house floor plan. The pool floor plan, um, it comes with, after, um, the, the bath house plan, there really wasn't a lot of public input on there. There wasn't really a lot that the public could decide, um, for things, because it's going to have to go back the way it was. Um, the, uh, pool itself was the culmination of multiple public, um, input meetings. Um, there is, uh, i- if you look, anywhere, there's a, a dark round circle on the drawing, that's a shape, a shape structure, and so we've got those of multiple sizes. You can see the original gazebo is still there in its place. Um, on the south end, you start with vertical water and zero entry, um, zero grade in, entry for, um, accessibility. Um, then you get into some bigger toys, and, uh, by the time you get to, uh, the bend where number five is, that's going to be of a depth suitable for crossing activities, so, uh, and I think there's going to be basketball goal somewhere around in there, too. Um, but, um, that's, okay, basketball goal just around, that's number one. Um, but essentially, um, all of these aspects were what had the, the highest level of, of support when they did the public input meetings. Um, you'll notice there is not a diving board, uh, in the northwest corner, number four, is a climbing wall, uh, but the well will be deep enough, if ever the interests of the community change, the well will be deep enough to put a diving board in there. So, um, and then, uh, two enclosed flume slides, uh, there in the, the north, uh, east corner, with the filtration building being built just off to the north of that.
Just, do they know if they'll be able to use the existing two?
The existing.
Those are not aquatic slides.
No.
They're not?
Um, so, no.
They're actually park slides.
They, they may be able to be refurbished.
The parks might get some slides.
Yes.
As long as we're using them.
Um, but they cannot be used at the pool. I, because I have some same things. Why are we putting two new slides in here, right? And they're like, those aren't appropriate. So, um, there we go. I'll make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for the Alba Aquatic Center Bath House, Alba Aquatic Center Bath House Floor Plan, and the Hatfield Park Aquatic Center from Kimley Horn Architects.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Winters, to approve the conceptual plans for the bath house and the pool, uh, as presented from Kimley Horn. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
All right.
Do you want to have a new date of the, um, reveal party?
There, there will be a public reveal party on, uh, November sixth.
That's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday.
They had to change it due to some.
Do you know what time?
Five-thirty to seven-thirty, and they will have hamburgers, hamburgers and fixings.
Did they change the date?
Yes.
They did. They changed the date because of some, I think there was a pageant going on here in town, and, um, there was another, I don't know, something else going on. There were two or three events going on that they opted to, to reschedule. And that'll be at the recreation complex. Okay, so we adjourned the Alba Economic Development Authority meeting, and we will return to the, uh, city council meeting. Item twenty-one is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to A 250 S 307 B1 to discuss city business manager search negotiations, and B 250 S 307 B2 to discuss city attorney negotiations.
I make a motion to enter executive session.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Beer, a second by Mrs., Mr. Winters, sorry, Daniel, uh, to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to ask the council and the clerk to remain. I'll bring you back in in a second. Everybody else, um, see you when we come out of executive. Return from executive session. Item twenty-three is action on city business manager search negotiations. We don't have any action to take at this time, um, hopefully soon. Um, item twenty-four is action on city attorney negotiations.
Um, I'll make a motion to retain Drew Cunningham as the city of Alba attorney at the rate of $1,750 a month.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Beer, and seconded by Mr. Winters, to, uh, obtain Drew Cunningham as city attorney for $1,750 a month. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Item twenty-five is new business, and we don't have anything that meets the definition and qualifications for new business. Uh, twenty-six is remarks and inquiries by council members.
Do we have a, a timeline for the resurfacing of that Locust Street?
It's contingent upon, um, being able to complete the, the water line.
Fair enough, and I guess what that's from. So, any idea when the, the pipes have moved off to the.
The RE grant, I mean, we just approved to apply for the RE grant tonight, and then there'll be a CDVG grant that's related to that.
And then, uh, for the work up there by, uh, Patrick in War Two, we put, we did redo those pipes and cut the roads, and we didn't resurface that, in a way, because it's kind of opened up, and then we basically.
Middle Street.
Uh, we will need to do that. I mean, we could.
It's on the list if you sit, yeah. Before we start getting freezing.
Seems like a lot of rain.
I mean, it's raining.
What are the chances that, what are the chances about Locust getting fixed by winter? That has been brought to me by a group of, okay. They're just kind of concerned with bad weather and the, the condition that it's now, you know, since they had to dig it up, which we get, but they're just kind of worried with snow and ice with it not being a proper road, the residents that are right there.
Worried about that.
Locust, right there, um, Locust and.
You know, I, I, uh, I, I think the, the main thing with our street projects that we've not considered in years past, maybe we've considered, we just haven't really executed properly, but every one of our streets, um, has a water line underneath it, unless we have moved our water line out from underneath that street. And down near every one of our streets that has an issue with its surface is because we've had to fix a water line underneath the surface. And so, in order to, you know, stop the, um, cycle of, of throwing good money and bad money, I mean, Locust Street is, is now the, you know, the center of that, um, because it makes no sense to spend thousands of dollars resurfacing that street just to throw Drake in an excavator and tear it up.
I mean, it happens on.
No matter how much she likes it.
Love it. Love it when everybody's.
No, I agree. The line is, it happened on our road right after they fixed it. We had to dig it back up because there was a water line break, so.
And it seems like a lot of the streets we've redone are the ones we're digging up, so it's not even.
And I was just, I had just been asked by the two or three people about the potential of it being redone by winter, so. They understand the line and.
Talk about my good buddy Shane Justice, and his displeasure with his friend the mayor right now.
He wasn't one that came to me, but.
No, um, just, uh, if, if, if folks visit with you about it, I mean, I'd just ask for a little bit of grace and understanding. I, I, I just, we can't keep throwing away money to, to repair lines and renovate streets. Anything else? I reckon that's enough. We